Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
Father, how blessed we are to have you as a father. A father who laid us down last night, and Father, you who woke us up this morning. Nothing in this life, Father, we do ourselves. It's only done because you allow it. And we just want to take this time to acknowledge it and thank you for everything. Thank you, Father, for this great country. This great country that we recognize as the United States of America. A country where we can freely and openly worship you without fear of prosecution. And Father, we want to thank the brave men and women who fight to keep this country safe, so we can exercise those freedoms. Thank you for them, Father. And Father, we also want to thank you for the farmers who grow our food, the truck drivers who haul it, and the stores who sold it, who sells it. Thank you, Father, for putting all those people on our path. We just want to thank you for everything. And Father, we want to thank the citizens of Plasti for choosing us to be their elected officials. And we pray that we do them justice and be well pleasing. And be with us, Father, in this meeting, that everything we do here be well pleasing in your sight. In the name of the Father, Son, and we pray. Amen.
From me and the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey, and thank you, Mrs. Miles.
You're welcome.
First item of business is to approve minutes of last regular meeting and work session. If there are no corrections, no additions or corrections, they will stand as mail. All right. Going into item number two is to receive and file electric, water, and natural gas reports.
Move that we receive and sign these.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mr. Worsham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is a time for concerned citizens' remarks regarding today's agenda Seeing that there are none, we will move into item number four is to consider a parade permit for UT Southern for May 3, 2025 graduation. We have the building, I mean, we have the parade permit turned in. We discussed it last work session, and everything is in order.
I move that we approve this permit.
Second.
All right. We have a motion made by Mr. Massey and a second by Mrs. Miles. If there's no other discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
And myself, Brendly.
Aye.
Item number five is to consider a parade permit for Giles Health Council for March 9, 2025. We discussed it in our work session, and Ms. Tiffany, is everything correct on that?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Everything's in order.
I make a motion again, and we approve this permit.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Massey and a second by Mrs. Miles. If there's no other discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Brendly. Aye. Item number six is consider mayor board appointments. What did, what we talked about last in our work session, there's two more that I saw in here that we need to, there's nothing changing, just renew it. But under the Housing Authority Board, Mr. Kelby Sutton will be, asked for him to serve again. And then Planning Commission, as we talked, Mr. Ricky Keith and Jeff Machello, they're already currently serving. Board of the Zoning Appeals, Mr. Jerry Bryant will fill that position. And the other, Jeff Bain, he's already started serving on the board, but he took over Mr. Keith Miles. And Keith Miles actually is now employed for the city. And so Keith Miles, where Jeff Bain is serving, has came up, and we just want to extend both of theirs. And then the Economic Development Commission has Mr. Ricky Keith to extend that. The City-County Joint Airport Committee, it will be Jerry Bryant, Larry Worsham, Ricky Keith, and myself. And that's all, that's all the changes. I move that we collectively ratify all these appointments.
I second that.
We have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mr. Massey. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brendly. Aye. Item number seven is adopt resolution relative to engineer contract with J.R. Walford. John, do you want to explain it just a little bit?
That contract will be the line going from the water plant to Magazine, and it'll be the two tanks, the Magazine tank and the small twin tank.
Yeah. It's the same thing we did, obviously, we discussed in our work session, but I just wanted the public to know that. I move that we adopt this resolution for this engineering contract.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mrs. Miles. Is there any other discussion? If not, Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brendly. Aye. Item number nine is the adopt resolution to submit an application for the Tennessee Housing Development Agency Home Fund Grant. This is, was discussed in our work session meeting as well. Mr. Massey done a really good job of bringing this up and doing a lot of hard work on this. So if there's any questions about it, we'll have you to discuss. If not, we will go look for a motion.
I move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mr. Bryant. Is any other discussion?
Yeah, let me say this. Tia called me, and she was talking about this grant. And she wanted some representative from the county, so she'd be able to get into that system, and she had some work to do there. So I called Graham, and Graham called Tia, and he going to plow us off with our portion.
Right. Yeah. And this right here will help for people to be able to fix their homes, possibly roofs. There'll also be tear downs, complete tear downs of homes and homes to be rebuilt under this grant that we're applying for. And this is to really help a lot of people. Something Mr. Massey's passionate about, and I know everyone on this board is, but this would be a great thing to see us do and go for it. So we're, we're hoping this works out for us. And that is up to 500,000?
Yeah.
We could get up to a half a million.
And the county can also.
Yeah. That'd do a lot of. But did we?
We need to do roll call.
Roll call. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye. One question.
Yes, sir.
Does Keith Miles know that we're doing this?
I would say he does. Yes, sir, John. He knows we are.
Okay.
And I think we actually, when we haven't, we met, we had a board meeting, not really a board meeting, but just a kind of a discussion about how the new board would work for the, for Keith's position, and we explained some in there.
Okay.
But we got Massey, Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Myself.
Aye.
Item number 10 is adopt resolution relative to borrowing 5 million for completion of the wastewater treatment plant work. This is what we discussed last meeting. John, do you want to touch on anything of that?
No, this, this will just finish this up, and they're supposed to be done around March of this year, 2025.
If you haven't, I know we all took a tour several months ago, but as soon as it warms up after our strategic planning meeting, we can take another tour and see what all, I know I've been out there several times, and Mr. Keith and I were out the other day and rode by there. There's a lot of good things happening out there. But look for a motion on that.
I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Massey and a second by Mr. Keith. Are there any other discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brendly. Aye. Item number 11 is to authorize advertisement for bids on snow equipment for the street department. Again, we talked about this at our work session. It's something, you know, first we thought about getting, try to look at doing a couple, and John put a lot of work into what we needed and what we have. The guys worked really hard with the tools they had, but we're just, this is just to purchase one snowplow and a salt spreader for the back, and it will attach to one of our dump trucks. And this, I was just at a meeting where the CO of the hospital was there, and they were thanking the city for their hard work of keeping that road clean. And so it's a big thing, and I don't know if the city's ever owned a snowplow, but we, we definitely think we need it.
I move that we authorize this advertising.
All right. We have a motion made by Mr. Keith. Second by Mr. Worsham. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah. Andy.
Uh huh.
Andy McGill.
Yes, sir.
He, how did they, I got John to call him.
Yeah.
And he was going to see if he had.
I didn't, I didn't call nobody. You didn't ask me to call. I didn't call Andy McGill.
I'll tell you how, how that worked. John, you correct me if I'm wrong. John Green.
John Green. I'm sorry. I mean, you looked at me, I thought.
Yeah. No, John Green.
Okay.
Andy, the ones they have are 12 feet, they're 12 feet, they're big ones, and we can still try to get one of those. The state has offered to possibly give us one, and it's an older one, but it could still help us on, if we ever had to do the bypass or the roads going out, you know, big roads, it's a blessing for what they're offering. But this one that we're going to be advertising to purchase is a nine foot, eight foot, or eight and a half. And what this is, on these small roads, Mr. Massey, like going towards the hospital, going, but you have to have that size, is what John Green has researched, because we can't hit cars that are out on the side of the roads, and it will fit on the truck, and actually, they'll be able to control it inside the truck, where the other one you cannot. But, but yes, we're still going to pursue, we're going to get this one if we all vote on this, and then we're going to follow up. Again, John's already talked to Mr. McGill and followed up on that.
And he didn't have any eight footer or nine footers?
No, he's just way, he said he would give back with me, but I haven't heard anything. But, you know, he said that he's over 22 or 26 counties, so.
A lot of, you know, they do a lot of the big roads, they understand stuff, and those were perfect for that. But in the, inside the city, we're going to have a smaller one.
Okay. Before we, I'm going to ask you this, before we make an obligation to, to purchase a $40,000 or $50,000 spreader, can we wait and see what John, I mean, what, yeah, what Andy, Andy McGill's going to give us?
No, I, what Andy, it's only 12 foot. Mr. Green just said, we have to have smaller. And, you know, if he gives us a 12, that's going to be great. We can put it on another truck and help out. But what we need in this city is eight, eight and a half. We've, John's talked to all the guys and got, done a lot of research on this. Regardless, if we do or don't get that other plow, we still have to have a smaller one to, to make it work.
Okay.
To my rec, you know, so that's why, John, we didn't want to, you know, you can go buy all the things, we just, we're just buying an attachment and a salt spreader for the back and put it on the truck that we already have.
Because his are mostly on a tandem truck, which is dual axle, and they're made for interstate, I mean. Okay, you could do First Street, Second Street, and.
We have the ability to install it ourselves.
No, it would, the company that we're, if, that do this, will put it on the horse, and that would be all included.
Because the blade works on hydraulic.
Yeah.
So we have a truck.
So you can do it inside the truck.
All right. Is there, we already have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brendly. Aye. Item number 12 is to open bids on pickleball court lighting. Ms. Tiffany?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's going to open, how many bids do we have?
One.
We just have one bid.
It's from Reynolds Electrical Contract.
All right. Reynolds Electric, Reynolds Electric.
The bid is $56,000. That's all. It's 56,000.
Lane, is that, I believe that's kind of what we were thinking.
Yeah, they, we budgeted between 15, 15, 5,000.
Okay. Well.
Have we done business with these people before?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's a Musco system that we'll be putting up, and Reynolds Electrical is the one who's done the installing of poles and lights previously at Magazine and at Richland. So we make good luck with this company.
I move that we refer this to our city administrator, Lane, and Mr. Green to make sure it fits our specs and with authority to award.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mrs. Miles. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, Lane, when you, when you talk to these folks, those two new, brand new tennis courts are sitting there. I just had the idea to keep in mind, we might want to put LED lights on those other two courts.
We have talked about that. For pickleball courts, the poles, they will be 40 foot. For, if you were to light the tennis courts, you need 60 foot poles.
I understand that, but I want to make sure that the electricity part of it will make it easy if we decided to do.
To add the lights. We have talked about that, and that's their plan.
Okay. Good deal.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Brendly.
Aye.
That's, that's going to be a great thing. I know in the public, a lot of people's asked, the pickleball courts, I think, future we'll have to look at doing more. They're definitely being used, and to see the lighting go up, I think that's great.
Somebody told me that we're having a pickleball tournament this weekend.
Really?
I don't know, but.
They are in Rexham.
Okay. Indoors?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's great. We're going to move into old business, have several things to, to bring up, just to make everyone aware. The, I guess we'll go over the bids. The HC Blake won the bid on the HVAC unit for option A. We opened bids, I guess, to.
14.
Yeah, the 14th. So we've, I just want to give everybody the update, but HC Blake won the HVAC unit, and the pre-construction meeting is scheduled for February 10, 10th. The planning to start work on March 3, which is great. Today, we came into City Hall, there's no heat. So it's a long overdue thing that needed to be done. Also, the Merco demolition, total demolition won the bid on Merco. They won this bid due to being the next lowest bid, and the low bidder did not qualify. The pre-construction meeting is scheduled for February 15. Sir.
So that was the 121,000 or whatever.
No, that, theirs was 220.
240 more.
240, yeah. The other ones didn't, after they got all their information in, there was not all, licensing and everything was in the package, so they went to the next.
That has become the ugliest building in Giles County.
Oh, yeah. It's one, one good thing, you know, that's a very good point you made, Mr. Bryant. One thing with the codes official that we have now, this board that we've all invested in, you know, we're not going to let buildings like that get out of hand, you know, that building probably should have been torn out 20 years ago. Yeah. And shouldn't have got out of hand. And so with this, you know, Mr. Miles, I see him all over town, I know he's working hard, and probably need five of them, but, you know, this is to stop things like that from happening. And it's never, again, to pick on anybody, but it's, you know, these buildings that corporations own are just being dilapidated, you know, we're, we're going to go after them and get them addressed. So I just want to let everybody know, because that's, that is something that is a hot topic. Also, the air, we talked about the airport hangar last meeting, when we opened bids, we were going to hold off for now until we figure out some, some more information on the financing on that. Do I need to go over anything else?
I just want to talk about the altitude valve at Jackson.
Yeah. The, Jackson's altitude valve needs to be replaced as an emergency. The price is $27,131.8. John has talked to Greg Davenport about this and agrees it needs to be fixed. Is that something we have to take vote on?
Well, the reason, because it's over 25,000.
What valve is this now?
It's an altitude valve. It's what fills the tank at Jackson. And it's, it's not opening all the way, so you're, you're having trouble getting water into the tank.
Will we, if it's over 25, do we have to bid it or?
No, if you do, it's an emergency.
Okay.
That's why.
That's what I was going to say, I think. Yeah. And Greg's saying, Greg Davenport has done wonders for our water system and our sewer. And if Greg says we need it, and I know John and them have worked on it's emergency, we need to act on that today.
I move that we approve this expenditure based on the emergency need.
Now, where, again, is this?
The altitude valve is right there in front of Jackson tank, up, up on Jackson Drive.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And I second that.
Ricky.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, that, that number again is $27,131.8.
Eight cents.
Yes, ma'am. We have a motion made by Mr. Keith. Yeah. And a second by Mrs. Ma, who made that?
Mr. Massey.
Mr. Massey. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Massey.
Aye.
Miles.
Aye.
Worsham.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Gentry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brendly. Bryant?
Aye.
Gentry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gentry?
Aye.
Brendly?
Aye.
Item number 9 is to authorize advertisement for bids on snow equipment for the street department. Again, we talked about this at our work session, it's something, you know, first, we thought about getting, try to look at doing a couple, and John put a lot of work into what we needed and what we have. The guys worked really hard with the tools they had, but we're just, this is just to purchase one snowplow and a salt spreader for the back, and it will attach to one of our dump trucks. And this, I was just at a meeting where the CEO of the hospital was there, and they were thanking the city for their hard work of keeping that road clean, and so it's a big thing, and I don't know if the city's ever owned a snowplow, but we definitely think we need it.
I move that we authorize this advertising.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Keith and a second by Mrs. Miles. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, Lane, when you, when you talk to these folks, those two new, brand new tennis courts are sitting there, I just had the idea to keep in mind, we might want to put LED lights on those other two courts.
We have talked about that. For pickleball courts, the poles, they will be 40 foot, for, if you were to light a tennis court, you need 60 foot poles.
I understand that, but I want to make sure that the electricity part of it will make it easy if we decided to do.
To add the lights. We have talked about that, and that's their plan.
Okay. Good deal.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Massey?
Aye.
Miles?
Aye.
Worsham?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Gentry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gentry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gentry?
Aye.
Brendly?
Aye.
Item number 9 is to authorize advertisement for bids on snow equipment for the street department. Again, we talked about this at our work session, it's something, you know, first, we thought